Well, hello, sir. You know how art. You know how art.
I'm good.
How about you?
He keeps telling me we're doing.
Every time I see you, I've got to say how art.
Oh, I'm sorry. I burnt my face yesterday and it's so hot. I mean, yes. Burnt my...
I know.
But now my face is, it just feels real hot.
Yeah. Yeah. Maybe rich one. But he been outside playing. He was like, boy, shit.
Right. It was beautiful, wasn't it?
Cops, break it up, please, back there. Thank you. Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our March meeting. And we will begin as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we're very honored to have Chris Maloney here this evening. Pastor of Multiplication and Growth at Crosspoint Church. So, good to have you with us. And if you would, please rise and join me.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for having me. Let's pray. God, tonight, I'm just grateful for the opportunity to come and pray for our leaders. God, I pray for the decisions that we have on hand and the things that are coming up here in our community. God, I pray that you would just give each and every one of them and each and every one of us in the room the stamina to approach each day, the ability to find the balance between our work and our family life. God, I pray for courage and wisdom and guidance and a time of questions and maybe even fear for some in our community and here locally. God, I'm thankful for a great community, for great leaders, for those that are working together for the better of all in Westfield. Thank you for the blessings that we all have been given and help us to be more aware of them each and every day. Thank you for this time. We love you. Amen.
Thank you so much. We hope you continue to multiply and grow. That's your job, apparently, with the church, huh? Good. Very good. Joe Edwards?
Okay. The agenda is essentially the same. There's one item that we'll... I have to call for the quorum. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll to determine if a quorum is present?
Joe Edwards.
Here.
Scott Willis.
Here.
Cindy Spalcherek.
Here.
Jake Gilbert.
Here.
Mike Johns.
Here.
Scott Frye.
Here.
Troy Patton.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Well, that behind us, we'll... I'll tell you that the only change to the agenda will be the consideration of a library board member. And that will be added to the agenda. Okay. All the members have received their minutes from the prior meeting on February the 10th, I think. Any changes or additions to the minutes? Can I take this by a voice vote? All in favor of the minutes of February the 10th, 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
You have to... Somebody has to make a motion now and second.
I'll move that they do it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. And now it's seven zero.
Thanks, Cindy. Okay. The next item is the Claims Docket on March the 9th of 2020, which is tonight. Members have looked over the claims. Are there any questions on the claims as presented? No questions. Do I hold the motion for approval?
Someone?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Scott, second. Okay. Can we take that by voice vote also? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. The next item is the Miscellaneous Business Special Recognition Life Saving Award to Officer Wade Bertrand. The recipient of assistance is Mary Brzee. Chief, would you do the honors?
Absolutely.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor. Thank you very much for letting me tell this story tonight. This story began on the evening of January 6th. It's a story of Mary and Gary Brzee. Normal evening that night. Went out for dinner with friends, came home early. Went to bed watching TV, like many of us do, like they had many times during their 12-year marriage. They both fell asleep. Gary was awakened by the TV shutting off due to being on a timer, a sleep timer. At that time, Gary heard Mary making a strange noise. He called out to her. There was no response. Couldn't get her to wake up. Gary turned the light on. He still received no response from Mary. She wasn't breathing. Gary called 911. He was stressed, like we all would be. Woken out of a dead sleep to find his spouse unconscious. The dispatcher told Gary that the fire and police were en route and started talking him through the scripted emergency protocols for CPR. Gary immediately placed Mary on the floor and began compressions. The dispatcher did a great job calming Gary, which allowed him to remember the things he was taught when he took CPR class at the fire department. Gary was also thankful that he listened to advice that he was given by the fire department that day. Never to lock your interior door that leads into your house from your garage. The other thing he did was he gave the dispatch the code to his garage. So when he called that night, that flagged the address and flagged the officers responding with the code. Gary never had to leave Mary's side. He continued to give him compressions. In less than two minutes from the time the call was made, Officers Wade Bertrand and Leon Carter arrived at the residence and went into their bedroom. Wade was armed with an AED. Wade immediately relieved Gary and started compressions. Wade had Gary take the packaging off the AED pads and Wade applied the pads to Mary's chest. The AED signaled to Wade to stop compressions. That time, the AED delivered a shock to Mary, then another. Mary's heart began to beat. At that time, the Westfield Police... The Westfield Fire Department arrived at the scene, as they so often do, and continued necessary medical treatment preparing Mary for transport to the hospital. At the hospital, Mary's heart stopped eight more times until doctors performed emergency surgery placing a pacemaker device in her chest. After a lengthy recovery, Mary and Gary are here tonight to present Wade Bertrand with the Westfield Police Department Life Saving Award. And she's here. Mary? At this time also, I'd like to recognize Leon Carter. She was also at the scene. And also the Westfield Fire Department for their response. Stay here for just a second. None of this would have been possible that night if it wasn't for the generous donations of 45 AEDs to our department back in December. With that donation, we were able to put an AED in each one of our patrol cars. That donation was made by an organization called Bolt for the Heart. At this time, I'd like to recognize the President of Bolt for the Heart, Pierre Tour.
Well, thank you very much. It's an honor and a pleasure to be here, Mayor. These days are really special for a lot of reasons. I got choked up listening to the chief tell that story. And, you know, we're a 501(c)(3) organization based in Carmel. We started Bolt for the Heart in 2010. And we live for stories like this. We raise money through running events. And when we raise money for these running events on Thanksgiving morning, we try to uncover a need. And we found out the Westfield Police Department had a need. So what we do is we raise the money. We purchase world-class AEDs from Cardiac Science, and we made a donation. Once a call comes in from the city, our rescue-ready heroes, like Officer Bertrand and Carter, go into action and do what they're trained to do, and they save Mary's life. Our police officer heroes are usually, and oftentimes, the first to a scene. EMS, they're often there as well, which is great. But they should all be armed with AEDs to make this possible. And Mary, we are so glad that you're here. So glad you're here. This was a textbook save. Very well done, Officer Bertrand. It's fantastic. You're truly a hero, what you do. Leon, same. You know how I feel. So we raise money through our races and through our registrations. We raise the money to buy these AEDs. And through relationships we have with other sponsors, like Indiana University Health, 3X Logic, and Performance Services, they help us give the mass to go out and buy additional AEDs. So I'd like to just say thank you to them. I'd like to say thank you to my partner in life, Susan, who is the brains behind Bolt. Our exceptional marketing director, Aaron Stanton, who's here as well. And our longtime partner with Cardiac Science, Troy Flugner and Steve Schloss of Cardiac Science, who've been with us since day one, since 2010. I'd like to bring up Steve for a special award. Thank you. Captain of Cardiac Science, Sam Bolt for the Heart, I'd like to present you with a white save certificate. Thank you for everything you do. These points may feature video once I do years, and then I save the life. So again, thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
When was it that you went through the dedication where you presented all these just a few months ago?
December.
December of last year?
Yes.
You put it to good use very well.
Textbook.
Thank you so much for the dedication.
It's our pleasure.
Officer, thank you.
The next item of business is a special presentation, reimagined Simon Moon Park. Jeremy Lawler, our Public Works Director, will do that.
Yes, thank you. And it's going to be a tough one to follow there. That's pretty exciting stuff. We'll talk about a park for a little while. Back in November, I believe it was, Chris McConnell from our Parks Department presented this same presentation to a couple of you. But I wanted to bring it back to you all so you could understand a project we've been working on for a couple of years that is really ready to take the next step, should we all choose for that to happen. Enhancing the quality of life is one of the fundamental visions of city and the staff. This is a photo of the wastewater lagoons from the top of the snow hill. The vision of this project was to take something that is once inhabitable and turn it into something beautiful. So back in, well, going all the way back to the '70s when these were constructed, 2017, they were disconnected from the wastewater treatment system. And we, the city, as the owners, were then required to clean these up and take them out of service. Once they were cleaned, then we were free to do with them what we wish. So that's when we started the project to think about really what the next steps are, what should it be, and et cetera. The Clean Closure, so our couple-year-long cleanup project, wrapped up in 2019. This is not the right presentation. Okay. So, sorry about that. The... So this is an aerial photo of Simon Moon Park. Today, it is a restroom, shelter house, a playground, and a sledding hill. When we were looking at that and thinking about what it could be with the additional 18 acres expanded to it, it would then become a 38-acre nature preserve-type park for... As a grown amenity for the community. So I'll spend a little time on this just to get you acclimated with our... We did a design charrette. Counselor Johns was a party to that, along with a consultant that helped us put together some of these things. But the major additions that you'll see is there's a parking expansion down here on the south. As it is today, we have some parking concerns out there, specifically during sledding season. You'll also see this change in the sledding hill. So we're going to reorient that and have the kids slide away from the road as opposed to in the road. This switchback is to allow people to get up there, but primarily to keep folks from sledding down it. And I'll show you a photo of what that could look like. Additionally, we added, or proposing to add, an outdoor educational classroom so that we could utilize this space for some field trips, additional programming and educational applications associated with, really with stormwater potentially, as well as just a nature preserve. You can see there are proposed five entrances into the park. As it is today, we really only have three. So then we could have some connectivity from the south into the park as well. We're proposing to add some fishing piers, a nice little pedestrian bridge over the middle of the waterway. And then maybe someday, a canoe launch so we could have canoe-type fishing out there or just people wanting to go out there and paddle. And then potentially a bait shop, snack shop, or even kayak rental-type facility back here with some additional ADA-compliant parking and some additional parking back here so that folks don't have to walk quite as far to get to the fishing. And then additionally, an expansion of our operations at the Public Works Facility. So we're contemplating filling a four-acre area, which that portion is actually already started. Here's just some renderings. You'll see, this is the switchback I was referring to. You'll see that there are some stones placed there to prevent unruly children from going where they're not supposed to. Here's a couple photos of what a fishing pier could look like, a canoe launch. We would obviously accommodate some ADA-compliant canoe launches as well. Here's a picture of a boardwalk that kind of walks through a wetland area so you can interact with that habitat. Couple renderings of what could be an outdoor classroom. Shows you two different versions of what it could be. We'll obviously go through a selection process if we get to design. Here's a couple more pictures of what a bridge could look like and just a really unique elevated boardwalk there. So since the presentation in November, we got some really good feedback from the community. What we're hearing is that this could be a welcomed amenity that would be well-received. We are currently at a point where we need to take our next steps, which is really the design phase, so engineering and construction documentation. And so I would like to... And I'll reach out to each of you individually or to get your feedback on what you think about this. I'll also share the entire master plan document so that you guys can really peruse through the work that we put together and let me know what you want to do and if we should start stepping forward. So with that, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Council members have any questions?
I have a few.
Sure.
Will this be an official addendum to our park plan, then?
It is not. So this was included in the last Zone Improvement Plan and Master Plan. It is not nearly as pretty in that plan as what it is in what we just showed you. I don't believe we have to modify it. But we will, the next time we do our impact fee study and master plan update, the more detailed documents will go in there. But it's currently in the master plan and eligible for impact fee funding.
That's what I was wondering with the cost of it. And, you know, we don't have those estimates yet and what our availability and funds would be out of the park impact.
Sure. And it... So we have a really preliminary estimate as a part of this. We won't know for sure until we get further into design. We did put in a 20% contingency, and it puts us just over $9 million. One thing that is different about this than some of the other projects is we can phase it in over time. So we can do engineering and then do mass grading and earthwork and get the ecosystem starting to stabilize and then add amenities as we go. The sledding hill would probably be a portion of that first phase so we can, you know, shape that. It's part of the master grading plan. As it is today, there are dollars in the approved budget for this project allocated toward it. We can utilize that and move forward if we so desire and then program as we go, year after year.
Do you know when we're due for our park impact fee?
We've got a couple of years left. I believe we did it in 2017 is when the new fee structure came into play. And it's a five-year plan. So by statute, we have to address that every five years.
Could we address it sooner if we needed to?
Yeah, I would imagine that you could. Yeah, we would... We could update it and then re-update the Zone Improvement Plan to see if that impacts the fees. The change in the fees, not the impact fee, but I guess it is. Yeah. And if that's a desire, then please let me know, and we can start that process. It's... The ordinance has to be in place for six months prior to any fee changes.
I think we have a few things where we should probably relook at our plan.
Sure. Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
We'll go on with our old business. I'm going to inject one thing into old business because we really are about two months late in getting this done. But the city council has an appointment to the library board. And I move that we appoint Kim Patton to the library board. Do you have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion properly made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Would you call the roll, clerk?
Scott Willis.
Yes.
Cindy Spalcherek.
Yes.
Jake Gilbert.
Yes.
Joe Edwards.
Yes.
Mike Johns.
Yes.
Scott Frye.
Yes.
Troy Patton.
I'm staying. I chuckled. Kim, would you stand up? I saw her come in a while ago so they can see who you are. This is... This is service without compensation. Maybe you get to all the free books you can take home.
Did you make the motion, I guess?
I made the motion. Yeah. Cindy did.
Scott did. Scott did.
But we thank you for your willingness to take this on. So you... There's an oath of office and an appointment that we have to sign and you'll have to sign. So we'll get that to you. Okay. Old Business is Resolution 20-102. And that is a resolution, it's fiscal plan for 20-point-dash-04 Chatham Hills annexation. And that is Pam... Pam, you're there already. Thank you.
Thank you, President. Members of the council, Pam Howard with the Community Development Department. Before you this evening, I have a 100% voluntary annexation along with the associated fiscal plan for approximately 6.2 acres to be part of the Chatham Hills subdivision. This site is located on the west side of the Monon Trail, north of 199th Street. This item did receive a public hearing at your February 10th meeting and is eligible for your adoption this evening. For the statute, the fiscal plan needs to be considered prior to consideration of the annexation ordinance. And at this time, I do have Greg Garitas from FSG Corporation to provide a little bit more details about the fiscal plans in general, after which both he and I are available for questions. Thank you.
Greg?
Thank you. Good evening. I've got one little handout that I'm going to pass around. There should be about 15, so... This is just to cover in general. And then I'm going to step you through the exhibits that are attached to Resolution Number 20-102. To explain, for some of you, you know me. I am president of Financial Solutions Group. I've served as an expert witness in annexation matters for many, many years, actually, in some of the ones around Carmel and various parts of the state of Indiana. So we've been doing annexation fiscal plans for quite a long time. I've passed this piece out, this handout, because I wanted to point you to the four... I'm not going to go over all the details of why the statute, what the statute calls for. But I'm going to go over why we believe that there's four important facts. One, fiscal plans, they're required by state of law in most cases. And so we put this together, and this was something that was really part of the 2015 update to the statute in 36-4. Again, reminding you that I'm a CPA and a securities, basically, hold security license. I'm not a lawyer. So I'm speaking, though, from a CPA standpoint. The number two, they form the basis of the annexation levy appeal to increase the city's maximum levy. That's something, if you... Take you back maybe almost 15, 20 years ago when we did the Clay Township, the very big, large annexation. It was very, very important. And that one, we actually phased it in, the impact of the annexation over three years after receiving a special statute to allow that and so that we could match up the revenues and expenses. That's really what you're trying to do in a lot of these annexations. You know that revenues are going to increase as there's a build-out. And you know that expenses are going to incur. Each annexation always has an increment of expenses. And so we try and match those up by having the levy appeal and then also by having what we believe is the true cost of providing services to that area. That's my point on number three. The estimate of the true cost of providing both services to and the direct revenue and trying to come up with those from an objective standpoint. We've seen a lot of developers in other areas put together studies. And they put together studies where they say there's a lot of revenue, but there's no incremental expenses. That's untrue. We don't believe, and it's been our philosophy all along, that one annexation will cause, depending on the size, will cause one officer. But three annexations will add up to maybe a little bit of an officer in each. And so we try and allocate those costs and assume that within our exhibits so that eventually then we're trying to... Again, we're matching up the revenues and the expenses and trying to take that incremental approach on each annexation. Number four, FSG recommends the voluntary annexation be treated as the same as involuntary annexations. I have served, as I said, on... As an expert witness, actually even on behalf of taxpayers in the Carmel, one of the Carmel annexations. And in that case, what you... The first data request you get in any type of annexation event is you get a data request that says, "Please give me all your annexation, both voluntary and involuntary fiscal plans that you've done over the last 10 years." And we believe that both a fiscal plan that is for voluntary and involuntary, you don't want to really discriminate. want to really discriminate, you really want to show both are on the same level playing field and you want to do the same calculations. And whenever, ever I've been able to testify as an expert witness, that's been my response and we don't treat them differently. We treat them the same. And I believe that's what's required now under the, the new statute. So that, I put together then the difference, the different statutory sites, there's about nine. I put together on the second page, our cost of service methodology that we believe is, is trying to get at those, both those revenues and costs, and then how we address administrative and general costs. Cause that's a pretty big bucket in a lot of, in, in a lot of budgets and I'm very, very familiar with your budget because I've been involved for many years. And so this is that general little write-up kind of explaining that. Any questions on that? And if not, I'd like to go to some of the document, the exhibit, and kind of walk you through how this is applied.
Any questions from the council? Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm turning to, as Pam noted, 102, Resolution number 20-102 and Exhibit 3, that's attached Should be Exhibit 3. There you go. Perfect. That's the cover and if you would like to, so what we do on the, on the very first table, these are standardized tables in each of your annexations, pretty similar to all the ones that we've done in the past. Here what we're doing is we're projecting over the five years, the estimated assessed valuation, the exemptions and the tax rate, and finally, and getting at the estimated revenue. In most of these developments, what you see is you see a phasing end. We do ask the, the, we ask for the information from the developer. It's not an absolute right, it's not an absolute wrong, but it is the best estimate and we can usually tell from history of doing these for many, many years in here in Westfield, that if, if it's far off. But obviously, market conditions will impact it, but we're making an estimate. Page two. Page two shows the est, the other estimated revenues that are generated. It brings in the assessed valuation, the property taxes. And keep in mind that what you will see then in, in annexations, you will see an increase in the income taxes, that there's always a year of delay because income taxes are spread. If you've ever looked at my sustainability, you'll see it's spread based upon, at least at this point in time, property tax levy. And so those, we estimate those. We estimate in some cases motor vehicle highway tax and local roads and streets. We've been pretty fortunate here in Westfield because of the special census does help us catch up in some of those revenues. And so most of the time you'll see those as, it being zero because if there is no roadway, if there is no special, a s, a special census, then those revenues really don't go up. So those will be zero. Page, Table 3. Page 3 is where we now estimate the non-capital costs. It remind, let me remind you that a lot of annexations, you always worry about capital and non-capital. This is the estimated non-capital cost that we're responsible for and is built into our model. We estimate this based upon the growth in AV and certain points in our, in our basic budget model that gives us a cost per AV or a multiplier, and then we factor these in. And you can see the assumptions and that are employed very bottom, but basically it's going through most of the budgets that we are expecting to go up. There are other expenses that may go up. We don't, you know, we try and capture the ones we know. There's some, there may be some that might go up because of whatever reason, temporary or whatever, but we believe we are doing a material amount of it. Next one is estimated capital cost. This is where we have to rely on your staff because we do not know that. And so if there is estimated capital cost that is coming in, then we would put it here and at this point in time on this one, we are not aware of any. Next, schedule, Schedule 5. We built, really kind of put together the revenue and the non-capital cost and show you on a, on a five-year basis, which is the standard planning period that we use on this. You could go farther, you could go 10. We've always cut it off at a, at a five-year and that's generally accepted as a good planning period for this type of study. We always have to indicate that if there is, is a deficit of any sort, what kind of funds that deficit? And that's been a question of the courts and obviously cash balance of the general fund is really what, where the bulk of this revenue is coming in and bulk of this expenses are being incurred. And so the general fund serves as the buffer if there is any negative balances. And a lot of times you'll see that in the first years because it takes a little while to get the income taxes in, takes a little while for the growth in the AV. Next one is Exhibit 4, and this is where it gets a little more complicated because you have to go through some of the circuit breaker impact. State legislature has just said that they're going to be looking at annexations real hard next year, the annexation law, because they do believe that each, each annexation does cause an incremental increase in circuit breaker. We actually have put that in, in our, in our document and you'll see it detailed a little more. There is some circuit breaker impact that occurs as a result of each incremental assessed value that is increased or put on the city, in the city's total AV. So you see here, we put it with and without and under Washington Township and under Westfield. The next page, Page 2, is before annexation and, and after annexation and kind of shows the impact of property taxes and circuit breaker on each, on that parcel. Then we show on Page 3, as the, as the, if you, you notice, as the development occurs, then we will show the impact that will happen there. Next, on Page 4, same thing there. On Exhibit 5, this is the parcel listing, as you, as we are aware of this one, it is one parcel that currently has a net AV of about $88,000. So very low AV, which we normally see with a undeveloped property. The next one then, Exhibit 6, is the estimated impact to other governmental entities, which you are also required to show. And so that really, the bulk of that gets down to what is the impact on Page 2, before and after with the total tax rate? And basically it's the incremental increases in the, in the tax rate from going, not being annexed to being annexed. The impact of circuit breaker on the residential is on Page 3. Page 4 is the agriculture, if there is any, and Page 5 is the commercial. Then on Pages 6, 7, and 8, we boil this down to the, the summary of the estimated auto excise tax and commercial vehicle tax, which is again required and set forth in the statute. You've got to be concerned with some of the other taxes also. So this really gets into the, to kind of the minor taxes, I call it, but how that is shared and, and what that's likely to look like. Again, it is an estimate and it, you know, if you go five years from now, it, it will be different. There's no doubt about it. Depends on how fast it grows out and how, how much the AV really comes in. But this is a good estimate and I believe a good snapshot about, you know, what's happening on the AV side, what's happening on the expense side, I'm trying to boil it all into a document that is somewhat understandable. So very understandable for me, but I've been through it a lot. Questions on this, on this? We do this then each, on each annexation, so the model is, is fairly similar. And by the way, the, the, the cost is very, very reasonable when we do these. It's not a, it's not a very significant item for either yourselves or for us, but it, I believe that it also then helps you move forward and helps in many, many ways. In the past, we've seen it when we've had those annexation appeals and matching up our revenues and expenses. Questions?
Greg, I have, I have one. Please.
Yes, sir.
I'm just, I'm curious, I mean, so, just to help me understand, so, I mean, the schools are, the schools are, are really getting the property tax values currently without the annexation? If there was, if there were a bunch of houses there, that apples and oranges would all be the same, correct? If the annexation didn't happen and there was how, and.
And there was houses already in place?
Yeah.
Then schools would be, yes, getting their, and the school district sometimes remember is a little different than the city district.
Right.
Okay. So I would say, yes, that's the case.
Okay.
They would be just receiving their same money and, you know, regardless of whether annexation or not.
Yeah. Okay. So, so, I mean, like on Table 5.
Okay.
You know, we, we go over, you know, like a, a, a five-year, you know, kind of an estimate of our revenues and expenses.
Yes, sir.
And, and so, I mean, I guess for maybe the taxpayers and even myself, I mean, wha, what's the, what's the net result each year, why we would do this? I mean, what's the, what's our net bottom line? I mean, in, in the average year, what's the, what's the plus to the city?
Well, there, Westfield hasn't had an average year. And, and so it, it, I mean.
Based on what we've had, what is it?
Well, remember, our AV has been growing, our total AV has been growing almost nine to 10% per year.
I know my property taxes go up every year.
Yeah. And, and so, yeah, now, that may be, that, that should be a function of AV because the city tax rate has been held pretty stable, you know, and you'll see that in the sustainability, real stable over a period of time. So the value of AV has gone up. I was just with the mayor in Chicago with a rating agency and he, he, in another municipality and he said, you know, people's AV is going, their AV is going up, I, I'm not, I'm going to take blame for that, but if their value is going up, that's a good thing. Okay? And we see that. The question is, is the ta, if your tax bill is going up because of something that the city controls, which is the tax rate itself, that's, that's one thing, you know, and, and we really keep a close eye on that, you know, and the mayor's given us, we've, we've worked with the mayor very close on, on the budget and trying to keep that. And so it's a function, I believe, of the value going up.
Yeah, so you mean for all citizens?
Well, generally, because, you know, I have not looked at individual AVs, but generally, yes, the value of homes in general have been going up.
Yeah, I mean, like, you know, the 10-year today, I mean, was down near what, .4 something, .5?
Are we at the 10-year what?
Treasury, sorry.
Yes.
So, you know, I mean, hey, we, we can all go refinance, by the way, for a 15-year fixed at two and three eights today, right? So people can afford more homes, so assessed value goes up. I'm not, I'm not arguing any point here, I'm just, I just want to know what, what's the net for, for Troy Patton, who knows nothing about numbers, what's the net positive for the city of Westfield?
I, I guess the way I look at that is we, that the, we've had economic smart growth and in Westfield, we've gained more revenue. Yes, more expenses have occurred, but we have a lot better standard of living and a lot more amenities that we've been able to bring to the area and the area is extraordinary.
Okay, so annexing this would bring more money to the city?
Does bring incrementally more co, more cost.
So what's the average net? Just what's, what's the average net to the city?
Well, I mean, if you look here, I mean, it's a thousand dollars, but this is a small annexation, six. Now, if we, if we went back to the very large one we did, 15, Brian, help me out, it may have been 20 years ago, the very lo, large one, it was millions.
Yeah.
Okay? So each one has been different, but right now with the 10% growth, it's, we're talking millions.
Yeah. I love millions, thousand, I'm not sure if I like. I mean.
They all increment, yeah. They all.
I, I'm sure they all add up. That's what I was trying to figure out, what the, what's the average net to the city?
And, and I'm going to, Westfield doesn't have an average. It is the hardest one to ever ballpark an average and, you know, I know it pretty well.
Yeah.
So I, I'm, I'm asking a question on Table 5. The net result in a five-year period of us annexing this parcel of property is $2,414. Is that correct?
Yeah. And that.
That seems pretty slim to me, but.
Right, but six acres. Now, also remember, your, your, your strategy of, and Pam's done a very good job at this, you, your strategy of annexation is always be aware of your contiguity too. Otherwise you cannot annex. And contiguity, I'll let the lawyer speak to that, but that's making sure that we have, you know, we're able to keep growing. And the last thing you want to do is go to the outside investment world and say, you're landlocked. Unless you can, you say you're landlocked and you have, I, I actually drove around in the car one time with a Moody's around Indianapolis and I said, what's your optimal AAA community? And it's one that is landlocked, but has a million dollars, million dollar homes and has $500,000 of income. We can't all have that. Okay? We can't all be that. So economic smart growth and being able to add to your environment and add amenities and grow very well, I think is what we've lived by and what we've done. We've done it very well.
I, I'm not arguing with you at all. I just thought it would be more dollars than that in this net annexation.
And I can provide some insight onto why you're annexing such a small parcel. As Greg mentioned, contiguity is a requirement for annexation. So when you're annexing a parcel, one-eighth of the boundary of that parcel has to be contiguous with the existing city limits. So if you're looking at this annexation, this is actually Phase 14 of Chatham Hills subdivision. And if you look later on the agenda, you have Phases 15 and 16, which will be contiguous to phases that are on the agenda right now. So it is a small annexation for this piece, but it's to be able to annex the next pieces. If we could annex it all in at once, it would be a lot easier. For me, it'd be a lot easier for you and for Greg. But this is the way we have to do it by statute. So that's why you're seeing such a small number for this one, whereas some of the other ones on, that you have fiscal plans, will probably be larger numbers because they're larger areas.
When we have something like this, is there a way just to say, hey, here's what the net, here's what the net average amount that the city's going to be getting? I mean, are we allowed to say, are we allowed to say that? I mean.
Well, you're allowed to say that, but we still by law have to have a fiscal plan.
Yeah. No, I get it. Again, I'm not saying I'm against that.
Oh.
I, I just want to say, hey, hey Troy, man, that, we're going to get, we're going to get 50,000 once we do all of these. Okay, got it. Perfect. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think there is a possi, possible way of doing that. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Greg? Okay. Do we have a motion that, to approve for the fiscal plan 20-102, the fiscal plan for 20-04, the Chatham Hills annexation?
Some move?
Some move.
Okay. Cindy moves. Do you, will you second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Scott seconds. Is there any more discussion? This been, this been kind of enlightening. I, I figured it would be more than that, but there's a lot of things that I think about and my thinking is not correct perhaps, but I thought there'd be three zeros on that, but it'd be great if it was, I guess. Okay, we got a motion properly made and seconded. Is there any more discussion? You ready for the question? Clerk, call and roll.
Cindy Spolcherick, yes. Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay. Thank you. Now we have a, we have the real voluntary annexation itself and this is up for adoption consideration this evening. Have the location map? Do we have a motion on this?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion properly made and seconded. Is there any more discussion?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
All right, we're ready to go on to Resolution 20-103, the fiscal plan for ordinance 20-05, the Atwater annexation. Pam, can you tell us what the net on table, on table five is? That's what I'm interested in.
Yeah, if we pull up table five, I can definitely tell you that. But this is, as you know, 100% voluntary annexation, again, this is approximately 10 acres, this will be Phase 1 of the Atwater subdivision. Again, you have a Phase 2 for this later on the agenda. This is on the north side of 193rd Street at the intersection of Casey Road. Public hearing for this was also held on February 10th and is eligible for adoption this evening. If we pull up table five, we can go over what the net, net value is, so you have that right there. Again, that is fairly close to the amount before, so we have, it looks like 19 in total, so just under 2,000. But again, this is Phase 1, which will contain very few houses and a lot of common area in the subdivision.
I will not be voting on this, so, Scott, do you wanna handle the mechanics of this one?
Sure. Are there any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 20-05? I'm sorry, Resolution 20-103 fiscal plan for ordinance 20, 20-05.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Cindy, can you call the roll?
Yeah, I'm not sure who did the second, was it Jake?
It was Mike Johns.
Oh, Mike Johns? You made, you made the, you made the motion and Jake second. Okay, sorry. Troy Patton?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Not voting.
Okay. Scott Willis?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero, six one. Epstein. He abstained, yeah.
Okay. The next is the fiscal plan, let's see, that's the fiscal plan, we've done the voluntary annexation. 20-05, and we're gonna get, what, 19, that's what we just voted on, we're gonna get $1,945 out of that one. All right, this, this I'll not be voting on either since I have a connection to that, not to that, but to that family, so, I won't be, I'll recuse myself. Do I have to leave the room? Scott, will you handle that?
Sure, so next on, on the agenda is ordinance 20-05, 100% voluntary annexation. Pam?
That, it goes with the last item I just discussed, so...
All right. Any questions from City Council? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
So, it was a motion by Jake Gilbert, seconded by Counselor Scott Fry. Cindy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Troy Patton?
Yes.
Joe, Scott Willis?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Jake, can you go get, thank you, there he is, he was listening in.
Okay, the next item is, excuse me, is the fiscal plan for Osborn Trails.
Yes, so again, 100% voluntary annexation and associated fiscal plan for 58 acres to be part of the Osborn Trails development. This is Phase 4 of the Osborn Trails development, located generally on the east side of Six Points Road, north of 193rd Street. This item, again, received a public hearing February 10th and is eligible for your adoption this evening.
Okay, is there a motion on the voluntary annexation for Osbon, Osborn Trails?
So moved.
Okay, Scott Fry moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Scott Willis seconds, is there any more council discussion on Osborn Trails? Clerk, will you call the roll?
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, the next item is 20-105, the fiscal plan for ordinance 20-07, the Lancaster annexation. There, it was introduced to the council on February the 10th. Did I skip one?
Yeah, 20-106, or 06, I'm sorry.
Okay, now, the fifth, there's two parts, there's the fiscal plan and the voluntary annexation. Okay, I missed that one. That's Phase 4, Osborn Trails, Phase 4. Okay, is there a motion on this one?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Cindy seconds, any count, any discussion? Will you call the roll on this one, Cindy?
Okay, Scott Willis?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, now we get to 20-105, fiscal plan for ordinance 20-07. Pam?
Yes, so again, 100% voluntary annexation for 45 acres to be part of the Lancaster subdivision. This is located on the north side of 186th Street, west of Spring Mill Road. This, again, received a public hearing February 10th and is eligible for your adoption this evening, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion on this, on the fiscal plan?
Just a question.
Go ahead.
Again, just to, just to reiterate, do you guys work with, like, Jeremy to go over this stuff? I mean, I mean, like, all the costs and everything, I mean, not to put Jeremy on the spot, but, I mean, because like this one, like, this one, again, the, the net's negative, you know, for five years. So, it's like, we're annexing, these are costing us money, I mean, I mean, I mean, Jeremy's gotta take care of all this stuff, I mean, with all his folks. I mean, is, is he consulted on all these costs, I mean, to make sure that...
Well, the operating cost, you, you handle normally the capital cost, correct, Jeremy?
Yeah.
And from the op, operating cost, we're using the same budgets and departments that we use on all of them. This one is, is negative i, in the early years because the, the value of the homes is not as large.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what's causing it. Ultimately, at build-out, we get there, but it is not, it is not the same value as the others.
Yeah, I was just kinda curious, I mean, if you like, I mean, if you talk to Jeremy or the police department and say, hey, you know, what do you, I mean, they're smarter than me, I'd like to know, I mean, I always wanna know what their, what their costs are. I mean...
Yeah.
On snowplow or, you know, streets or, you know, I'll give you, good, just to give you an example, I'm sorry for actually bringing this stuff up. Like, the neighborhood I live in, right, so, they did a crappy job with the road, right? I mean, so, they, they didn't even, I'm not even so sure they did the final grade, because...
You sure would say who they was.
Okay. Well, so, so, I, I was in the hot areas of laborers union for about a year and a half, and, and we did roads, and, I mean, I'm not even so sure the final grade was ever put on there, so, next year, you know, the city's gonna have to pave over it, well, I mean, maybe it would've lasted five more years. I'm just, I'm just curious, I just wanna make sure that we're being covered, I mean, in all our costs.
Yeah, I mean, Jeremy, do you wanna speak to that for us?
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just curious.
Okay, so from a capital perspective, like new road construction, all these new residential units pay the same road impact fee, that's our real capital fund.
Yeah.
From a maintenance perspective, I know they have maintenance dollars factored into their cost projections. I've not been involved in what that calculation is, but I, they do it all over the place, so I'm sure they have pretty good numbers.
Okay.
Yeah.
On build-out, Greg, how many, how many years do you think it'd take us to break even on that one?
Well, I, I put it up here, five years, and it could take a little longer if that drags out, you know? So, it all depends on the market, and the market for those value of homes. And that, I don't, you know, that one's all across the board, and it depends on what happens next, so... But again, we have to make a reasonable estimation at the time we have the doubt.
Okay.
And that's what we're trying to do.
Do we have, just follow up, do we have any projections of once the neighborhood is built out, what that revenue looks like?
No, I haven't done that.
We don't go that far, okay.
Okay, I, I think before we go on with future discussion, we better see if we have a motion for approval on this. Do we have a motion? So moved. Okay, it's moved by Jake, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Scott Fry, okay, now we can discuss more. I think it would be, it's incumbent upon us and the Plan Commission to give us developments, don't put us in a hole, basically. I don't know how you do that, but, I think I do, but, I'm not gonna say because I really, but it'd be, it would be nice to not be in the hole, let's put it that way. If, if this market continues down, 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 we could really be in the hole, and it would be a bad thing, so... But, they're working on it, they've got, probably got pipe in the ground, they're probably starting to think about their streets, they're doing something out there. So, the, we've got a motion to approve, any other discussion? Clerk, would you call the roll?
Okay, Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Now that we know the, the economics of that, we're gonna annex this, right, Pam? So, anything you wanna say about it?
Nope.
Okay. Do I have, do I have a motion for this, ordinance 20-07?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 20-07.
Scott Willis moves, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, Mike Johns seconds, okay, we've got a motion properly made and seconded. Is there any further discussion that the council would like to make on 20-07, the voluntary annexation of Lancaster? Thought that was on 191st Street, it backs up 186, does it run between 186 and 195? I didn't look at the map.
No, that is, 186, okay, I, I stated that wrong then, I'm sorry. I think I said 193rd, I think that was the last annexation that you did, or 196.
I'm thinking of something else.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion properly made and seconded, is there any more discussion on 20-07? Clerk, would you call the roll?
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, the next one is 20-09, North Point PUD Amendment 3 for Gordon Food Service. There, this was introduced to the council on February the 10th, it was a public hearing on February the 18th. Plan Commission recommendation on that same date. What this basically is, if I'm not mistaken, is, is this the whole thing? Is this the movement of the tank, or is this the whole thing?
Yes, this, the original GFS amendment was approved a couple months back in November, and that is what permitted the site plan as it was, the elevations and most of the site design. Since they've gotten further into their design process, they had to make a couple of changes. The one you're discussing is a water storage tank for their fire suppression system that will be located near the southeast corner of the site, right there. It exceeds the maximum height required by the ordinance, and it's also into established front yards. An additional change they're making is on the north side of the property. They originally had 80 feet between the edge of pavement and north property line, and now they are moving it down to about 57. That was not a requirement in the ordinance, there was never a minimum width requirement, however, they did require substantial compliance with the previous concept plan, and with that large of a difference, the department could not determine it was substantially compliant.
So, this is just a change to some of the things they're doing then?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve or disapprove ordinance 20-09?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 20-09.
Okay, Scott Willis moves, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Jake? Seconds, is there any further discussion? Clerk, will you call the roll?
Okay, Jake Gilbert?
Yes.
Joe Edwards?
Yes.
Troy Patton?
Yes.
Scott Fry?
Yes.
Scott Willis?
Yes.
Cindy Spaljeric?
Yes.
Mike Johns?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Now, we're finally to new business, and there is a, we have to have a public hearing on ordinance 20-10, and this is the 100% voluntary annexation of Atwater, Phase 2. I have to recuse myself on that one, too, so... Scott, would you handle that?
Absolutely. All right, so ordinance 20-01, 100% voluntary annexation, Pam, you got the information for us on that?
Yes, so this is Phase 2 of the Atwater subdivision, you just adopted Phase 1 earlier in the meeting. So, Phase 1 will provide the contiguity for the 90 acres that is a portion of Phase 2. This is located west side of Six Points Road, north of 193rd Street. This is eligible for public hearing tonight, and we bet, we'll be back for your adoption in April.
Great. Kevin, do we have any cards this evening?
We do, we do not.
Does anybody in the audience like to make a few comments about ordinance 20-01? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 8:06 PM. City Council, any comments from councilors?
So, would the financial, I'm sorry, the fiscal plan be before us in April?
Correct.
Just like tonight?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Pam, appreciate it. Joe, come on back in, oh, you're listening in back there.
The next item is ordinance 20-11, 100% voluntary annexation of Chatham Hills, Phase 15. It's introduced tonight, and it calls for a public hearing, are there any cards on this one?
Yes, sir.
I've got that in reverse, the public hearing takes place at 8:07, no cards. Public hearing is over at 8:08, that's the fastest minute you ever heard, wasn't it? Okay. It'll be up for adoption on April 13th. Okay, the next one is ordinance 20-12, voluntary annexation, 100% for Chatham Hills, Phase 16. It's introduced tonight, calls for a public hearing, I'll call for the public hearing at 8:09. Are there any cards, Kevin?
No, no, sir.
Public hearing is, anybody from the public wish to speak on this? I should look out among the throng out there and see if there's any speakers, nobody, public hearing is over at 8:10. Okay, it'll be up for adoption on April the 13th. Are there any residents who wish to address the council on items not on the agenda at this time?
We, we do have one card this evening for that, Susan Finkbeiner.
Okay?
Did I say that right?
Good evening, I'm Susan Finkbeiner. I live at 15810 Shining Spring Drive in Westfield. And I'm speaking on the topic of the Monon Trail and the intersection crossing at 161st Street. I wish to speak in favor of having a safe pedestrian crossing at the Monon Trail and 161st Street. I have lived between 156th and 161st Street, directly on the Monon, for the past six years. We have witnessed the increased volume of trail users, as well as vehicle... We have witnessed the increased volume of trail users as well as vehicles on a hundred and sixty first street since locating there. At the February tenth city council meeting, a presentation of the history and present situation was given at the request of the finance committee and pre-council. Facts that were stated at this presentation included the following. When the section of the trail was opened between a hundred and forty sixth street and a hundred and fifty sixth street in two thousand and nine, three vehicular crossings were identified as issues of pedestrian crossings with vehicle traffic. Those were a hundred and forty sixth street, State Road thirty two, and a hundred and sixty first street. Studies were done of predicting traffic and pedestrian usage in the area, noting a hundred and sixty first street would become four lanes by twenty thirty. In two thousand and eighteen, a study was to determine, was determined, was made to determine if underpass tunnel or a bridge was the most financially fiscal answer for this crossing. The underpass tunnel was best option given the terrain and other factors. The cost of presently constructing an underpass tunnel for eight, four point eight million, and in the future, when one hundred and sixty first street would be widened, costs would increase to six point three million. Questions regarding a hog cross system that would stop traffic were made and answered at this meeting. I attended the finance committee meeting last Monday, March second, and questions were asked again and answered. There seems to be no disagreement that this is a dangerous crossing. However, during the finance commen- meeting, a council member made statements that he stood at the crossing and made comments to pedestrians, including, were they aware that the cost would be ten million dollars to build a tunnel? To my hearing of the data at the council meeting, that is inaccurate. Council members have stated that public safety is most important. Just last Friday, this past Friday evening, another near accident happened during the late afternoon and evening where a driver heading east was blinded by the sun and did not see a cyclist in the crossing. At any crossing where vehicles and pedestrians share the same space, accidents can happen. Fault can be found with pedestrians or vehicles. Usage for both vehicles and pedestrians has increased as residential and commercial areas have increased and is on pace to grow in this area. Please do not wait to make a separation of pedestrians and vehicles until something life-threatening happens here. We shouldn't have to wait another ten years for this crossing to be made safe for all the users. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak? Okay, we're looking for city council comments. I'd ask first for the, uh, pla- advisory plan commission?
Yes, yes. The planning commission met last Monday evening. Um, we had, everyone was present with the exception of Cindy, who was out sick that night. Uh, we had about three items on the agenda. The first was a consent item, which was the motor district at Griss Mill Crossing, which was the approval of the detailed development plan for a hundred and ninety six car condos on twelve acres at Griss Mill. Um, that item passed eight to zero. The next two items of business were open to public hearings. Uh, the first was Claiborne Farms by Del Webb, which is west and adjacent to Town Road and north of and adjacent to a hundred and forty sixth street. Um, it's a Del Webb, uh, Pulte development. Uh, Nelson Frankenberger spoke that night. Um, it's basically, they, uh, presented the primary plat, which shows four hundred and ninety lots and approximately two hundred and fifty seven acres. It's an age-restrictive community. There are a hundred and sixty acres of common ground, a two hundred foot buffer zone on the western edge of the development, and approximately one home per acre overall. Uh, we did have, or no one spoke, uh, from the residents at that, at that public hearing. Second public hearing that evening was the Wheeler Landing PUD Amendment for Portillo's, which is the northwest corner of Wheeler Road and State Road thirty two, next to the Monon Bridge. Uh, Portillo's Hot Dogs is, uh, re- requesting an amendment, uh, to the State Highway Thirty Two overlay and the development standards of the Wheeler Landing PUD. Uh, the APC, uh, there were two residents spoke, uh, regarding that proposal. Uh, the APC members with respect to that were concerned, uh, with the plan as presented and that it did not follow the Thirty Two overlay guidelines. Uh, the proposal in question, uh, shows drive-through lanes, the full length of Thirty Two and Wheeler Road, and enclosed trash containers on the State Road Thirty Two side, setbacks which are different than those recommended within the Thirty Two overlay, and building materials which were not consistent with the guidelines as set up in the Thirty Two overlay. So the APC requested that the architect, architects take a hard look at the plan and make revisions as necessary to try to comply with the Thirty Two overlay. Um, and it's my understanding that they plan on coming back to the APC next, next Monday, the next meeting, with some revised plans, um, and that, that was the meeting for last week.
Okay. Okay, Troy, finance committee?
Yeah, um, uh, we met, uh, last Monday. Uh, finance committee, just to give you a couple of updates, um, you know, we heard one comment, uh, this evening about the tunnel. We obviously discussed the tunnel. Uh, there was not agreement on, all the, uh, all the avenues have been explored. Uh, we discussed that, um, quite at length. Um, we also, I think one good thing, uh, that came out of the finance committee meeting is, uh, I think we can keep moving forward on the budgeting process, uh, as we get, as we get closer to the end of this quarter, as of three thirty one. Um, I think, uh, you know, from a city council standpoint, from a city standpoint, we're going to get closer to hopefully, uh, bridging the gap between, um, the, the financial statements uh, that we, that we, uh, have at the clerk treasures office, uh, versus open gov. I think obviously there are some discrepancies there, we're trying to resolve those and, and get those accomplished. And so hopefully on a quarterly basis, um, um, we can reconcile those amounts. And I, I think, I think that's a lot, moving in a positive direction. I think the last thing I'll say, just from that standpoint, I mean, with, um, uh, I know this kind of goes along with city coun- city, uh, council comments, is, uh, maybe at our next, uh, finance committee meeting, we should explore, uh, what, what, what's in our, um, what kind of covenants we have with the, with the debt we have. I read today where, where the city was refinancing at about a two and a half percent rate less than where we're at. So I don't know if that's something that we've addressed at this point, um, but obviously, with our debt, we could save a couple million a year. That'd go a long way to help, you know, I, I don't, again, I don't know what our covenants are. So, uh, I have to go back and read this, I think I read the last one, but that was the only one I read. So maybe it's something that we need to explore at the next finance committee meeting.
Thank you Troy. Jake, anything about oversight, or have you kicked it?
Not yet.
Okay, it's ready to be kicked in gear though, I, I...
We'll have a, uh, public meeting soon, getting out soon.
Alrighty.
Joe, can I, can I have a comment?
Yes, you may.
Um, I don't know if everyone in the audience is aware, but despite our growth, we are actually seeing decreased, um, serious crime here in Westfield. And I want to thank our police department, they had put out their annual report. And our, I believe it's called the OCR offenses, Chief Rush? UCR, I'm closed, uh, which, which are, you know, typically the, the bad ones, the theft, the murder, you know, anything big. Um, and we've seen a ten percent around there, uh, decrease.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and, you know, here we are growing, we have a lot more going on, and we're seeing those decreases. So I really want to thank you, Chief Rush and your team.
And I wanted to add, while we're giving you praise, uh, Chief Reed and Chief Rush in the back. So, in terms of Westfield's finest, when we moved here nine years ago, the only name I'd ever heard of was Wade Bertrand. Because I was hired to coach football and he was an excellent quarterback at the time. So, um, good enough that it convinced me to take the job. And I knew he had a younger brother, I did not know his younger brother played offensive tackle, uh, until I got here, but anyway. He, uh, you know, the, the story tonight was amazing, Chief, thanks for sharing that. But, I know from that particular person, he and his wife Allison have been raised here in Westfield. Dad ran a furniture store, they, their second child's due anytime, they're going to live in Westfield. It's, it's that kind of story we really want for our city. You know, successful residents raising up and growing up here and caring about the city, and then coming back and serving our city. Now, I know he was, uh, here tonight, won an award for saving a life, but I, I know from working in the schools the sheer amount of people who know him for different reasons, but all positive. Uh, one time I went to, uh, Monon Trail, which has our highest free and reduced lunch, um, rating in the school system, and he was just there eating lunch with kids, and I'm like, what are you doing here, waiting? He's like, I just come over sometimes, and, and a kid came up and was like, um, oh, Officer Bertrand's at my house all the time. Now, I don't know that that was for good reasons. But for the kid, the kid thought, you know, the kid was just saying, Officer Bertrand checks on me. And so, uh, great story tonight, but I know, um, that members from both your departments do great things in the city every day that don't get recognized. And, um, so, I don't hear Cindy's comments, just thank you for the day-to-day. Even if it's not life-saving all the time, thank you for the day-to-day, what you do to protect us, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it's your meeting. Thank you, okay, the, of course, the number one topic on everybody's mind, uh, today is the coronavirus and what, uh, the effects it will have on us, uh, really on a day-to-day basis. I assure you, the city is, uh, is preparing to the best of our ability. I've been in touch with, uh, the folks at, uh, Riverview Hospital and their medical director there, uh, with the county health department. Uh, met late last week with Dr. Great to see where we were and, uh, how we can best, uh... Right now, it's just, how can we best talk together if something should change along the lines? Uh, we are asking anybody that, that, ask a question, just follow the procedures of our state and, uh, health department, CDC, those routines, that's where we are now. Uh, we get a lot of inquiries about, uh, Grand Park and the events there. And, uh, Grand Park is, uh, is responding, mostly they are tournament organizers as to, uh, you know, how do we, uh, respond to, uh, groups that are asking. Right now, we're not, uh, obviously, we're not canceling anything. Uh, we're doing a lot of, uh, uh, hand sanitizing out there, you know, the advantage of the Grand Park season coming up is that it is ninety-five percent outdoors, um, so we're not packing people in together. Uh, we also met last week with, uh, fire and police, with our Grand Park people, and with the lead nurse for Westfield Schools, just in, uh, talking about preparations, what, uh, first responders would need to do and certain measures, so there's a lot of planning going on. Right now, it's, uh, it's day-to-day and, uh, see where we are. The four mayors, uh, of Hamilton County. We have a telephone conference tomorrow at nine AM to discuss where we are, each individual city, and where we, uh, anticipation of where we might be going. So we'll, uh, put out information, Vicki's office will, uh, immediately, upon any kind of notification of anybody here in our city or, uh, with the schools, we'll be coordinating, uh, with them. So it's, uh, it's, uh, an exercise that, it, uh, you know, we have a lot of readiness plans behind the scenes for a lot of disasters, be it, uh, fires, plane crashes, tornadoes and such. And, uh, it's, uh, we, we get that book out and, uh, go through it with all of our public safety and really all of our employees, so. We are staying as close to the situation as we possibly can. Two notes, a little more up top, uh, high topics. I'm really happy for our Westfield High School, has placed six students going to the Nationals uh, in, uh, speech and debate competition, uh, this, uh, this weekend. And they'll be going to Albuquerque, so hopefully that will all take place. So that was a big deal, and I did have the pleasure, if any of the rest of you did, of going to the Carmel Westfield sectional basketball game, Coach. And I, they did well, they did really well, but what I was really excited about was the, the enthusiasm of the students was almost a throwback to days of old. There was a lot of students there, a lot of excitement. And, uh, it was just, it was fun. They did, they had a good showing, great showing. Thank you. I believe we're also sending six to Nationals in DECA, which is a business organization, so, yeah, good stuff. There it is. No other business, meeting is adjourned. Do we have an executive session? Yeah, we'll see if... Sorry. Do we need an executive session?